Bienvenue à nouveau dans notre quatrième jour. Cela fait longtemps que nous faisons cela, nous sommes maintenant au quatrième jour. Nous avons réussi, au cours des trois derniers jours, à compléter une discussion en détail sur chaque paragraphe qui était dans le document initial. Nous l'avons mis à jour la nuit dernière, donc j'espère que vous avez eu l'occasion de regarder le document mis à jour et révisé, et j'espère que vous l'avez apprécié. Nous sommes très heureux du progrès que nous avons fait jusqu'à présent. Et je vous remercie beaucoup pour les contributions constructives et scientifiques et le spirit positif que vous avez montré au cours des trois derniers jours. Nous avons aussi eu une discussion utile ici dans le comité du Conseil d'administration. Aujourd'hui matin, nous avons eu une discussion sur certains paragraphe, et cela a été suivie par deux groupes excellents et fluides dans la soirée. Je devrais dire trois groupes dans la soirée. Et à travers tout cela, nous sommes très impressionnés par votre engagement pour avancer. Notant aussi que la nuit dernière, vous êtes allés au-delà de la période où vous étiez localisés, donc je vous remercie beaucoup. Ce matin, nous commencerons notre session en écoutant des rapports des groupes contractels qui ont réuni hier. Et comme un rappel, comme indiqué, nous avons eu trois groupes contractels qui ont réuni hier. Donc, d'abord, je voudrais inviter les co-chais des groupes contractels 1 à fournir un rapport sur les résultats de la deliberation sur les paragraphes 15 et 16, et sur l'enclosure E, qui concernait la révision du mécanisme, ainsi que la discussion qu'ils ont eues sur les questions des indicateurs et de la surveillance dans le contexte de GOSI et de la cible 13 du GMBF, comme demandé par la sous-présidente 25. Je voudrais aussi prendre cette occasion pour remercier nos co-chais Joakim et Alicia pour avoir dirigé cette discussion agréable. Donc je vais donner le froid à Joakim, Alicia, qui nous donnera un rapport de la travaille réalisée. Alicia, s'il vous plaît, donnez-le.
Dans Salzburg, nous avons eu le plaisir et le privilège de faciliter la discussion du groupe contact qui a été demandé avec la révision du mécanisme, ainsi que des indicateurs de partage de bénéfices à partir de l'information sur la séquence numérique dans le contexte du cadre global de la biodiversité. Le groupe contact a travaillé pendant une heure et demie hier soir et a réfléchi sur le timing et le processus pour la révision, sur l'importance de créer des liens à la révision du GMBF. Nous avons aussi eu une bonne discussion sur l'enclosure E et a adressé les indicateurs dans le contexte de GOSI et de la cible 13 du GMBF. Le résultat de la travaille du groupe contact a été présenté au bureau ce matin. Merci Madame co-chaire.
Merci beaucoup pour ce rapport concis et aussi pour le progrès que nous avons fait sur ces paragraphe. Maintenant, nous voudrions entendre des co-chais des groupes contractels 2 pour rapporter sur le progrès fait dans la deliberation sur l'espacement, en particulier les paragraphes 9 à 12 du document. Je voudrais aussi prendre cette occasion pour remercier nos co-chais qui ont dirigé le groupe contact 2, Neka et Salima. Donc, s'il vous plaît, donnez le froid à Salima de Belgique pour donner un rapport de le groupe 2. Merci.
Aujourd'hui soir, ensemble avec ma co-chaire et Neka Nicholas, nous continuons les discussions sur la question de l'espacement des fonds. Pendant cette session, le groupe contact a discuté les facteurs possibles qui pourraient être considérés dans n'importe quelle formule utilisée pour calculer les allocations country. Le groupe contact a discuté différentes options pour les facteurs et a également adressé des questions relatives au processus et au timing pour déterminer la formule. Le résultat de la travaille du groupe contact a été présenté ce matin au bureau. Merci co-chaire.
Dans le cas des autres deux co-chais, il est évident que vous avez fait un excellent travail en dirigeant la discussion sur ce sujet. Enfin, nous allons revenir aux co-chais des groupes contractels 1, qui ont aussi traité les questions sur le paragraphe 2 hier soir. Et aussi, juste pour vous remercier encore, Alicia et Joakim, pour votre excellent travail dans la réunion du groupe contact. Donc, je vais donner le froid à Joakim d'Argentine pour fournir un rapport de la travaille du groupe contact.
Merci beaucoup Madame co-chaire. Ma co-chaire Eliska et moi avons eu le plaisir et le privilège de faciliter la discussion du groupe contact sur les contributions au Fonds. Le groupe contact a travaillé la soirée pour une session complète, ressurgissant notre discussion sur la viabilité des options et adressant les options B, C de paragraphe 2, et une nouvelle option D. Il y a eu un soutien pour différentes parties pour chacune de ces trois options, et les pros et les cons pour chacun ont été discutés en détail, incluant ce qui pourrait être nécessaire pour rendre ces options viables dans le monde réel. Le résultat de la travaille du groupe contact a été présenté à vous et au bureau ce matin. La réunion a été fluide et nous avons réussi à compléter notre mandat. Nous voudrions remercier tous ceux qui ont pris part au groupe contact, et nous vous remercions tous pour les bonnes et constructives deliberations et le spirit positif qui ont prévécu dans nos deux sessions. Merci tous et merci co-chaires de nous intéresser avec cette tâche. Merci beaucoup.
Merci pour le rapport de retour, et nous sommes très reconnaissants du progrès fait, et nous voudrions aussi remercier tous ceux qui ont participé au groupe contact pour leur travail dur et les discussions constructives. En termes de nos réflexions sur les groupes contractels hier, nous sommes incroyablement satisfaites des conversations, et nous notons que les participants étaient très actifs, clairs et constructifs dans tout le travail. Donc nous voudrions vous remercier beaucoup pour tous ces résultats. Maintenant, allons vers ce dont nous allons discuter aujourd'hui. Vous pouvez voir que au cours des trois derniers jours, nous avons navigué par des terrains très difficiles, et nous sommes impressionnés par le hasard que vous avez apporté pour les problèmes techniques et les défis qui nous sont nécessaires de considérer et de ironiser pour assurer que ce qui reste dans nos discussions sont les problèmes politiques. Nous voudrions vous rappeler que nous ne sommes pas encore là, comme la plupart d'entre vous pourrez vous d'accorder, et que vous allez tous continuer à pousser certains de ces sujets difficiles vers le forward d'une manière pragmatique, en regardant les besoins et les intérêts que vous avez exprimés au cours des trois derniers jours. Juste maintenant, nous n'avons que aujourd'hui et demain, et nous devons continuer à travailler dans le même esprit de compromis que nous avons fait au cours des derniers jours. Au cours des trois derniers jours, nous avons entendu vos réactions, insights et réflexions sur le document et sur les enclosures que nous avons préparées. Vous avez souligné des manques et des domaines pour l'amélioration, et nous sommes très reconnaissants d'entendre vos réflexions et de vos propositions, toutes qui ont été très utiles et aussi constructives. Et comme nous l'avons promis hier, nous avons intégré vos commentaires et vos propositions et produit un document révisé, qui était disponible en anglais ce matin, à peu tôt que 1 h, et dans d'autres cinq langues autour de 7h30 aujourd'hui. Nous espérons que vous avez eu le temps de étudier le document et de le discuter dans vos régions et aussi dans vos sous-groupes, et avoir eu quelques changements silencieux de la version précédente, comme vous pouvez le voir. Aujourd'hui, nous aurons deux réunions du comité du Conseil d'administration, et nous planifions se rencontrer une fois plus tard ce soir dans un groupe contact. Sur la base de cette discussion, de ce qui sera déroulé aujourd'hui, nous préparons un document CRIP qui sera discuté demain à l'heure, dans la même salle. Et nous savons que c'est très ambitieux de nous, mais vous avez déjà montré confiance et confiance en nous, et aussi en nous. Et nous devons nous souvenir que rien n'est accordé jusqu'à ce que tout soit accordé. Donc nous travaillons aussi avec ce compréhension. Tous les éléments du document sont interlinkés. Parfois, les paragraphes qui ont été suggérés ou un certain texte qui a été suggéré dans un endroit a été intégré dans un autre endroit juste pour permettre que cette place et l'interlinkage soient cohérents, et nous travaillons ensemble pour construire un document qui est équilibré et aussi utilisable. Et ce n'est pas une tâche facile, mais nous essayons de créer un document qui sera vraiment utilisable pour COP. S'il y a quelque chose que nous avons manqué, continuez de le répéter, et ensemble, nous devons nous d'accorder comment refléter ces manques de la meilleure façon possible, mais aussi d'une manière qui nous maintient dans notre mandat. Pour cette session du comité du Conseil d'administration aujourd'hui, nous planifions discuter de la nouvelle version du document, paragraphe par paragraphe. Si nous voyons qu'il y a beaucoup de divergence sur un paragraphe, ce qui sera difficile de résoudre dans ce contexte, nous l'enverrons et déciderons comment le traiter à la fin de la session, parce que nous voulons être capables de faire le meilleur usage de notre temps limité. Donc avec ça, j'espère que nous sommes prêts à commencer et à regarder le document que nous avons produit, paragraphe par paragraphe. Et comme un rappel, lorsque nous commençons cette discussion, disent lentement, et si vous avez plus de texte à proposer, faites-le à la vitesse dictatrice, de sorte que nos interprètes et tous les autres délégués aient la chance de suivre vos interventions. Nous serions également très reconnaissants si vous pouviez applaudir vos textes et vos propositions sous les déclarations pour cette session planale, et idéalement, si vous pouviez le faire maintenant, de sorte que nos interprètes soient capables de capturer tout lorsque vous commencez à apporter ces propositions vers le forward. S'il vous plaît, notez que cette version finale, dans la version finale, nous espérons avoir une section préambulaire, mais nous traiterons de ça plus tard dans le processus. Mais pour now, nous nous concentrerons sur l'annexe où nous avons des questions sur les modalités. Et nous commencerons par lire le document comme indiqué, paragraphe par paragraphe. Vous pouvez remarquer que dans le document, nous avons commencé avec le paragraphe 0, qui n'était pas initialement là. Et c'est parce que nous avons obtenu des réflexions précédentes que nous pourrions avoir besoin d'un paragraphe qui est général et qui introduit plus de ce qui vient de sous. Donc nous avons un nouveau paragraphe 0. Et aussi dans le document, tous les domaines soulignés sont des nouveaux textes qui n'étaient pas initialement dans le document précédent. Donc ce sont les nouveaux éléments qui ont été reflétés, ceux qui sont soulignés et bordés. Donc maintenant, nous ouvrons le froid pour entendre vos opinions sur le paragraphe 1, sur le paragraphe 0, désolée, qui est le nouveau paragraphe qui a été introduit. Donc je sais que vous pourriez avoir des commentaires sur tous les paragraphe, mais nous voulons vraiment prendre cette discussion paragraphe par paragraphe, et si il y a quelque chose que vous aimeriez commenter, laissez-le sur ce paragraphe spécifique, de sorte que nous ayons une discussion structurée. Donc maintenant, commençons par le paragraphe 0, et je vois que nous avons déjà Egypte. Egypte, s'il vous plaît, donnez-le.
En fait, ce n'est pas sur le paragraphe 0. Je prends le froid à titre de groupe africain. Nous voudrions exprimer nos inquiétudes concernant le document actuel. Nous croyons que le document ne meet pas nos attentes, puisqu'il faille attaquer un équilibre entre l'accès à l'information sur la séquence numérique et la partage de bénéfices équitable et juste provenant de sa utilisation. Nous stressons qu'il y a une manque de langage clair établissant l'obligation de surveillance de partage de bénéfices provenant du DSI, une absence d'un processus défini pour le partage et la surveillance de bénéfices non monétaires, et aucun pas de pas effectivement de gouvernance de données efficace. Ce sujet a été relevé plusieurs fois au cours du processus, et nous avons même fourni une proposition de texte concrète. Madame co-chaire, lorsque nos points de vue et notre intervention ne sont pas suffisamment reflétés dans le document, cela abattent notre confiance dans le processus comme un tout. Nous voudrions aussi stresser que le mandat de ce groupe est de traiter le partage de bénéfices à partir de l'utilisation de l'information sur la séquence numérique ou des ressources génétiques. Cependant, le document actuel faille directement dans la description de l'obligation pour le partage de bénéfices. Madame chaire, nous demandons à tous ceux qui ont des inquiétudes de réfléchir comme un footnote au document actuel. Néanmoins, nous continuons la négociation dans une bonne direction. Merci Madame chaire.
Merci beaucoup Egypte à titre d'Afrique. Et je pense que comme indiqué, lorsque nous arrivons aux paragraphes où vous sentez que vos opinions ne sont pas réfléchies, nous vous demandons de les relever encore. Donc nous serons heureux de bienvenue ces zones supplémentaires où vous devez mettre ces choses que vous sentez ne sont pas réfléchies quand nous arrivons à ces paragraphes. Maintenant, je donne le froid à Sénégal et puis Zimbabwe. Sénégal.
Comme la présidente, Madame la co-présidente, Monsieur le co-président, à la suite de l'Egypte, le Sénégal en tant que président du groupe africain voudra revenir sur la question soulevée par l'Egypte. Le groupe africain veut montrer sa bonne foi dans les discussions, mais nous avons constaté que de façon globale, nos préoccupations ne sont pas relevées dans le document, et ce depuis le début. Donc nous vous demandons d'en tenir compte s'il vous plaît, pour que l'ambiance et l'esprit qui a prévalu depuis le début puissent continuer. Nous ne voulons pas avoir une position pour nos réunions de coordination, et après avoir 54 pays qui vont dire la même chose, il y a un travail de fond qui est fait en amour, et si un pays s'exprime au nom de l'Afrique, voyez tenir compte des propositions qui sont faites. Le cas essayant, nous allons perdre beaucoup de temps, et vous allez entendre la même chose 54 fois. C'est l'esprit global qui fait que nous ne voulons pas vous faire perdre du temps. Donc sur nos préoccupations en groupe de contact ici en plein air, sachez que ce sont des choses qui sont discutées, harmonisées, et qu'un pays peut être appelé à exprimer au nom du groupe africain. Ceci est une considération globale, mais je laisserai le soin de mes collègues de revenir sur les différents points à chaque fois que besoin sur un paragraphe. Je vous remercie.
Merci beaucoup Sénégal, et nous regardons vers la réception de ces textes et vos suggestions quand nous allons aux paragraphes relevant, comme vous avez indiqué. Maintenant, je donne le froid à Zimbabwe et puis à Cote d'Ivoire. Rappelez-vous que nous regardons maintenant le paragraphe 0, et il serait aussi bon, comme vous avez levé vos commentaires, de réfléchir aussi à ces domaines spécifiques qui sont manquants dans ce paragraphe, et puis nous prendrons les autres éléments manquants lorsque nous avancons dans notre discussion. Donc Zimbabwe puis Cote d'Ivoire.
Merci Madame co-chaire. Oui, je resterai dans mes commentaires, même si je suis d'accord avec ce qui a été dit, je resterai dans le paragraphe 0. Il y a deux changements textuels que nous voudrions voir sur le paragraphe 0. Le premier est la parole «devrait», nous voudrions que ce soit «devrait», et nous comprenons que ceci est légalement binding, et nous avons entendu les inquiétudes dit avant. Mais honnêtement parlant, il n'y a pas de règle que le CBD ne puisse pas utiliser la parole «devrait». Par exemple, dans la décision 1515 sur le mécanisme financier, cette décision utilise la parole «devrait» neuf fois pour se référer à des actions à être pratiquées par les deux parties et par le secrétaire exécutif. Donc cette décision doit être légalement binding. Nous ne pouvons pas utiliser la parole «devrait» lorsque nous parlons de parties, oui, mais ici, nous ne parlons pas de parties, nous parlons des utilisateurs de l'information sur la séquence numérique. Et puis le deuxième changement que nous voudrions voir est qu'au bout, nous voulions dire «d'une manière équitable et juste». Donc la déclaration alors lit «utilisateurs de l'information sur la séquence numérique sur les ressources génétiques DSI». «Sur les ressources génétiques devraient partager des bénéfices provenant de leur utilisation d'une manière équitable et juste». Merci.
Zimbabwe pour ces commentaires. Maintenant, je passe à Cote d'Ivoire puis à Sud-Afrique.
La présidente, la Cote d'Ivoire soutient la déclaration faite par le président du groupe africain et également l'Egypte. Je voudrais nous emmener à regarder l'intitulé de la NICE. Quand je lis, je vois modalités de mise en œuvre du mécanisme multilatéral de partage des avantages découlant de l'utilisation. Nous sommes ici en train de parler de partage des avantages. Quand on écrit au paragraphe 0, les utilisateurs de l'information de séquences annulées sur les ressources génétiques devraient, alors je me demande si on s'inscrit dans le titre même qu'on a eu à mettre. Et c'est pourquoi je soutiens la déclaration qui vient d'être faite par, je crois, le Zimbabwe, si je ne me trompe pas, voilà, pour dire qu'il faudrait que le verbe «devraient» change pour que ce soit contraignant. Donc «devrait» devait être remplacé par «doivent», et j'adore également ce qu'elle a ajouté, «partage juste et équitable des avantages». Merci.
Merci Cote d'Ivoire. Nous prenons plus de points en ce qui concerne le paragraphe 0. Donc nous avons Sud-Afrique, Royaume-Uni, puis Suisse. Sud-Afrique.
Mon est juste simple, mais je voudrais soutenir notre président ou notre président du groupe africain sur ses commentaires faits par le document, ne prenant toujours pas en considération tous les commentaires qui ont été faits. Mais sur le paragraphe 0 en particulier, je suis juste ici pour pointer le typo sur le double de ressources génétiques. Mais je soutiens que nous avons le verbe «devrait», et je soutiens également Zimbabwe l'inclusion à la fin de la phrase pour l'inclure «d'une manière équitable et juste». Merci.
Merci Sud-Afrique. Et comme nous passons au Royaume-Uni, je voudrais également appuyer les parties qui sont en train de progresser pour aussi réfléchir à ce qui a été dit par les autres parties en particulier. Je pense que le problème qui est en train de surgir principalement est sur le verbe qui est supposé être reflété dans cela. Donc peut-être que je voudrais entendre en termes de salle ce qu'ils pensent aussi sur ces propositions qui sont en train de surgir. Royaume-Uni puis Suisse, suivie par l'UE.
Merci Madame co-chaire et bonjour collègues. Je commencerai sur le verbe, donc merci beaucoup à mes collègues pour leurs suggestions sur le langage. Et je suis d'accord que c'est vraiment important de mettre clairement et de mettre la bonne intention de ce que nous essayons d'acheter dans cela. Nous comprenons cependant que «devrait» est un langage de traité, et nous aurions du mal à accepter cela. Mais ce que nous pensons peut être utile serait changer «devrait» en «devrait», et cela peut aider. J'ai aussi quelques autres commentaires. Je pense aussi que cela pourrait être utile, donc en regardant le titre de l'annexe, donc «modalités pour l'operationalisation du mécanisme multilatéral pour le partage de bénéfices équitable et juste», et puis ce premier paragraphe, je pense que nous pourrions être un peu plus clairs sur le spectre spécifique de ce premier paragraphe, et je suggère d'ajouter une référence à des bases de données publiques. Donc le paragraphe lit «utilisateurs de l'information sur la séquence numérique sur les ressources génétiques», comma, «tenues dans des bases de données publiques», comma, et puis le paragraphe poursuit. Et je peux également soutenir l'addition des références pour «équitable et juste» aussi. Merci Madame chaire.
Merci au Royaume-Uni et aussi pour le soutien des additions sur le partage équitable et équitable. Et pour vos commentaires sur l'utilisation du verbe. Maintenant, je donne le froid à Suisse, EU puis Inde.
Merci co-chaire. Donc le paragraphe 0 est vraiment un paragraphe important parce que ici, nous sommes en train de mettre en scène ce qui vient ensuite. Et dans notre point de vue, ici aussi, un concept basique manque parce que ici, dans ce paragraphe, nous devons s'assurer de savoir de quoi nous parlons. Et nous discutons ici une décision COP, qui est en fait légalement non binding, et donc nous ne pouvons pas introduire aucune mesure légale basée sur cette décision COP. Et donc nous ne sommes pas d'accord sur l'utilisation de mots comme «devrait» ou le changement en «devrait». Mais dans notre point de vue, il devrait lire «les utilisateurs sont encouragés à contribuer ou à partager des bénéfices». Et je pense que c'est vraiment un principe ou une logique basique qui devrait être suivie. Donc les utilisateurs sont encouragés, et pour faire fonctionner le mécanisme entier, il est important que nous ayons de forts incentives pour encourager ces utilisateurs. Et cela arrivera plus tard dans le texte, mais juste pour faire que ce concept soit clair. Donc un fort incentive pour les utilisateurs serait la certitude légale, et donc ils doivent être sûrs que lorsque ils contribuent au Fonds selon les provisions que nous avons 设定 dans cette décision, ils sont exemptés de toute plainte bilatérale nationale de partage de bénéfices provenant du DSI. Donc je voulais juste faire très clair que ce concept basique manque. Puis aussi en ce qui concerne les additions qui ont été proposées, nous sommes heureux aussi de l'addition du Royaume-Uni en ce qui concerne les bases de données publiques et aussi en ce qui concerne le partage de bénéfices «d'une manière équitable et juste». Merci beaucoup.
Merci Suisse. Je vois qu'il semble y avoir du soutien du projet du Royaume-Uni sur l'inclusion de «tenues dans des bases de données publiques», mais aussi pour l'addition à la fin «d'une manière équitable et juste». Et puis je pense que le problème maintenant est sur le verbe actuel à utiliser et ce qui implique. Donc j'espère que nous aurons plus de points autour de ça. Maintenant, je donne le froid à l'UE, suivie par l'Inde puis le Norvège.
Bonjour collègues. Nous avons assez aimé le langage comme il est, mais n'avons aucun objection au Royaume-Uni en la moitié, ni à l'addition du groupe africain à la fin. Voudrait mener à suivre le mot «devrait», mais pour la clarté, je préférerais en commençant par le paragraphe 0 par tous les utilisateurs. Merci.
Merci l'UE pour cela, et donc l'UE voudrait inclure tous les utilisateurs. Et je pense que je voudrais aussi entendre d'autres sur cela. Maintenant, je donne le froid à l'Inde puis le Norvège, suivie par l'Argentine. Inde.
Merci co-chaire. La intervention limitée que j'ai voulu faire était que les utilisateurs de l'information sur la séquence numérique, lorsque nous associons cela avec des bénéfices, je crois que l'intention est des utilisateurs commerciaux de l'information sur la séquence numérique, parce que les utilisateurs, vous savez, pour les recherches, nous utilisons aussi ce DSI. Donc je ne sais pas si nous voulons distinguer ici à ce stade ou à un stade ultérieur. C'est un point. Second, nous sommes d'accord que les utilisateurs de l'information sur la séquence numérique tenues dans des bases de données publiques, mais comme a été discuté hier, ces bases publiques doivent confirmer un certain cadre de gouvernance mentionné hier. Donc ce point doit être ajusté à un moment donné. Quelles sont ces bases publiques? Si elles confirment les stipulations du CBD, est-ce que c'est la façon correcte de le mettre? Donc c'est une autre inquiétude que j'ai ici. Et je voudrais... And I would like to stick to the word should and also to fair and equitable sharing. So these are the interventions that I wanted to make at this stage. Thank you.
Thank you very much, India. Maybe just to come back to you to get clarity. With regards to the opening of the paragraph where we have users, your proposal is to include commercial at the beginning because I think we also have the EU proposal to include all. So I just want to get back to you and understand what the proposal is.
Also, we can add all commercial users of this digital sequence information held in public database confirming to the governance framework of public database as laid down by CBD.
Thank you, India. Also bear in mind that we do have paragraph four that speaks specifically on the public databases. So you might also want to reflect with regards to the governance issues if we could address them in paragraph four. But we have taken your point, but just a point of reflection on whether that could be specified in that paragraph. Now I'll give the floor to Norway followed by Argentina. Norway.
On the chapelle zero, I'm fine with the additions that have been suggested so far. But we'd have to reflect a little bit on India's suggested addition. On the use of language, on the shall, I'm a bit hesitant because this is basically treaty language. So the Convention on Biological Diversity in Article 28 has a procedure for the adoption of protocols. And the text of any proposed protocol shall be communicated to the contracting parties by the secretariat at least six months before such a meeting. So basically, if we are embarking on a treaty process, we're sort of missed the deadline for COP. So, but I think it's the sense that we are working on a soft law instrument that has some kind of normative effect anyway. It's our belief that if that's the case, and that's the assumption Norway is working on there, we should use as hard soft law language as possible, which includes words as will and should. Thank you.
Thank you, Norway, for bringing that up. I'll give the floor now to Argentina, maybe just to indicate that the purpose of this paragraph was to set the scene. And I would really appreciate that we bear in mind that we have unpacked the paragraph in the upcoming paragraph. So we hope that you keep the same spirit of keeping it simple and short and just to set the scene, and then we'll go into the details later on. I'll give the floor to Argentina and then Japan.
Muchas gracias, co-presidente. En primer lugar, queremos agradecer los esfuerzos de los copresidentes hasta el momento para iniciar estas conversaciones. A la vez, queremos expresar que consideramos que muchos de los comentarios que la Argentina realizó y que el GRULAC realizó no fueron reflejados en el non-paper, por lo cual procederemos a intervenir en los párrafos correspondientes para mencionar estos comentarios. Con respecto al párrafo cero, apoyamos la propuesta de Reino Unido de incluir available on public databases, pero no podemos en este momento apoyar la inclusión de all al comienzo de la frase. En este sentido, consideramos que es una conversación que tendremos en el siguiente párrafo. Muchas gracias.
Thank you, Argentina, and please do provide those missing elements as we move forward the text. I'll now give the floor to Japan, Guatemala, and then Brazil.
That COP decisions are not legally binding in nature. That is a simple fact. This has been confirmed by Concha's synthesis document already, and it has been confirmed by the presentation, by the secretariat during IAG. So COP decisions are not legally binding. This is a simple fact in nature itself. So for this reason, we just would like to support the proposal made by the Switzerland. Users are encouraged to contribute. Thank you.
Japan, I see that I have a long list of parties. So maybe just to take stock, I think we see that there is generally support for inclusion of held in public databases that was made by the UK and also the addition of in a fair and equitable manner that was made by Zimbabwe. So I would also want to see if parties are in agreement that we move forward. I think the place of contention right now is on the use of the verbs as well as on what it's starting at the beginning, whether we put all or we just start with users. And then I think India also included a commercial users. So we'll get some more views, and if we see that we are not moving forward on this point, I think we'll take the divergence as it is and then move forward to the next paragraphs. So I'll now give the floor to Guatemala, Brazil, and then Egypt. Guatemala.
En este párrafo creo que si vamos a incluir todos o usuarios en general, sabemos de que aquí van prácticamente todos los sectores. Entonces consideramos que es importante por lo menos hacer una diferenciación en la clase de beneficios en los cuales podrían aportar o contribuir estos usuarios, todos los usuarios o los que sean. Entonces, en ese orden, proponemos incluir después de la palabra show monetary or non-monetary benefits. Gracias.
I would like others to bring their views with regards to that. I'll now give the floor to Brazil, followed by Egypt, then EU. Brazil.
First, on the verb, we reiterate our position that has been expressed many times. We should not delve into legal discussions. The concrete fact that no one can deny that has been a clear political decision, and that's the important topic at hand, and that this political decision should, shall, will be respected. I think there is general agreement for the proposal to use in a fair and equitable manner. So my proposal would be if no one, unless there is stronger positions, just keep it the proposal as it is, the Zimbabwe proposal, which we think. We are a bit concerned with, concerning the proposal the Guatemalan just raised. We do not think would be appropriate to mention monetary or non-monetary benefits in that because it could give, send a message that it could be either way monetary or non-monetary, and then that would mess up with the other articles that will deal specifically with the modalities of monetary and non-monetary benefits. As we have stated yesterday, and before that, we believe that the rule should be monetary benefits and that we should be very cautious when discussing non-monetary benefits to not lose track of the fact that the main benefits will be monetary, that should be the general rule. Now, I would be very interested to hear the rationale behind the proposal by the UK on the addition of held in public databases. We are not quite sure of the implications of that proposal. There are situations in which private databases use, take sequences from public databases and provide services of selection of those for specific purposes, for specific users, and they charge money for that. Would that kind of use be included in the multilateral mechanism? We certainly think it should be, shall, and we will be. So we would benefit, we would benefit to hear a rationale on the UK proposal. Thank you very much.
I have UK on the queue, so when they take the floor, I hope they'll be able to provide the rationale behind the proposal as requested by Brazil. And also, thank you very much for considering the spirit of this paragraph, that it's just setting the scene and therefore might benefit if it's kept simpler. I now have Egypt, EU, then Jordan. Egypt.
I think the para should be kept simpler, as you just said. So we are also view that it should be users, all users. We don't believe that the word commercial should be included. We're opposing that. And because actually, if you are even non-commercial user, you can share non-monetary benefit by even making your research paper available or writing a report or all those kinds of contribution, even posting them on the clearinghouses is a sort of non-monetary benefit sharing. So for that, all user, or you adjust user to be more simple, should share benefit. We are for the wording shall, but we can live with should to be aligned with the decision. We oppose the introduction of public database. We think it has many implications and it's limiting the scope. The essence here is to be general. If you are generating benefit, then you should share. And the word share, it means that you already had something to gain and you are just sharing part of it. So this would remove your worry. If you, if you say that you have gained nothing, then you cannot share something out of nothing. We support the proposal from Zimbabwe, and it brings, it aligns the language with CBD and with the decision. It's, we are in favor of that addition, and thank you.
Thank you very much, Egypt, for also the explanation. And I would hope to hear back from India about the flexibility in terms of the use of the word commercial based on the explanations that have been made. I'll now give the floor to EU, followed by Jordan.
Thank you very much, Co-Chair. I think I follow the same reasoning as the delegation of Egypt. I think the sense of the introductory paragraph is that all users, commercial or non-commercial, should share benefits, and those benefits could take the form of monetary or non-monetary. And I think we all agree that non-commercial users would mainly focus on non-monetary benefits, would focus on non-monetary benefits while commercial users could actually do both. So that was the sense of our proposal, to have all users mentioned. If it helps, we could certainly live with the Guatemalan proposal of clarifying monetary or non-monetary. But I think that for the sake of keeping it simple, we would actually prefer to have the language, "All users should share benefits," and with the additions. We noted the comment by Brazil. I think that's certainly an issue that we might want to discuss further. I don't think we can at this point in time sort of solve it. We certainly support the inclusion, but I would note that there are questions around that for further discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, EU. I'll give the floor to Jordan Eswatinie, Saudi Arabia, United Kingdom, Uruguay, Cuba, and Uganda, and we'll move to the next paragraph. So these are the last parties that I'll take on this paragraph, and I think we seem to be agreeing on some elements. So Jordan, then Eswatinie.
[Inaudible] 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 [Inaudible]
Thank you, Jordan, for those comments. I'll give the floor now to Eswatinie and also point taken about the duplication of the words. Like indicated, we finished this document at 1:00 AM, so you might imagine that we could have been not in our daily mode when we were finishing the paper, but thank you very much. So I'll now have Eswatinie and then Saudi Arabia, followed by UK.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair is earlier highlighted by Senegal and my other colleagues from Africa before me. We are not happy, Madam Chair. We feel that in general that there are inconsistencies in the way we are doing things in this working group. It seems like we are okay when it comes to issues of access, but generally not comfortable when it comes to the real issue why we are here, the issue of benefit sharing. Our understanding is that this working group has said should focus on benefit sharing from the use of DSI. So the Kingdom of Eswatinie supports the use of the word shall in that paragraph and the addition of in a fair and equitable, sorry, in a fair and equitable manner. We strongly do not support the Indian view of the use, sorry, the Indian view of commercial users, but it should be users or all users. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Eswatinie. And I think like it's reflected on item three on the screen, this is development of a mechanism for benefit sharing. So we'll try to keep it in that spirit. I'll now have Saudi Arabia and then United Kingdom.
[Inaudible] 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 [Inaudible]
Thank you very much for that, Saudi Arabia. I'll now give the floor to UK and also if you could respond on the earlier comment by Brazil following your proposal. And then UK will be followed by Uruguay. UK.
Addition of inserting the word commercial, but I think we've heard views around the room on that already, and I support the summary by the EU. So thank you to Brazil for the question. And just to provide some reasoning and justification for my addition, the reason for adding public databases is to make the separation between the benefits that should be shared through bilateral agreements. So where DSI is generated as a result of accessing the physical genetic resource as opposed to obtaining DSI through a database. So currently, as it reads, it would mean that even when DSI is sequenced directly from a genetic resource and used under mutually agreed terms, then benefits should be shared both through the terms of the mutually agreed terms but also under the multilateral mechanism. And so my attempt was to try and separate the two. Thank you, Madam Co-Chair.
Thank you for that explanation. Thank you for that explanation. And I hope that Brazil could reflect on that. I will now give the floor to Uruguay, Cuba, then Uganda. Uruguay.
Well, our position is to maintain the simple paragraph because it defines initially where the rest of the content of the document will lead us to deeper discussions. We don't include all the users, since the users that contribute to the mechanism will be defined in the subsequent paragraphs. We are in favor of the word shall, but it's acceptable to use "should." Well, now we have an explanation from the United Nations concerning the inclusion of public data. In principle, we consider it interesting to not include or include databases for reference to the basis of data sequences to reference what we are referring to and include it in a just and equitable way, if we consider it acceptable. Thank you.
Thank you, and also for seeing the spirit of keeping this simple. Because I know that there is an appetite to discuss everything that is in the rest of the document in this paragraph. But we just want to set the scene here. So thank you, Uruguay. I'll now give the floor to Cuba and then Uganda.
Thank you, President. I would like to add to the call from various countries that it is a initial introductory paragraph. Therefore, it should be open, open. You yourself said that in subsequent paragraphs there are specific pronunciations that can even illustrate better the reach of what we are deciding. I think, no matter how many additions there are, they can be accepted. Like the one from Zimbabwe, which has been quite recognized. I have my reserve to classify here the types of benefits for this reason. They have more clear developments in subsequent paragraphs. By saying benefits, monetary or non-monetary, I think that does not necessarily bring much more to the decision. But in relation to the reference to public data, I would like to share the concern that if we include a specific reference to public data, we are forgetting from the beginning the private data. And it's curious because in paragraph 15/9 there is a paragraph in the resolution that invited us to address the differences between private data and public data. And that did not lead to these debates. And therefore, there is no text about how the private data are involved in this process. As said, they are passed on by national regulations of countries that are part of the convention. They are not separate entities from the issue. It could be a very interesting variant, Uruguay's formula, of not adjecting the data. Simply saying the data related to DSI, because it is the issue we are dealing with. Lastly, I think the verb the use of the should is not unfamiliar to this type of decision. The decision 15/9 has many shoulds and many decisions should. And it is not a legal link. And it came up here. Therefore, I do not think it is difficult in conformity with the previous action that was taken from the convention to accept the should. We should avoid in the initial paragraph a kind of invitation, a provocation. This is not an issue that we would like to have. No, this is an issue that we need to have. So that the benefit sharing from the use of this sequence information can be achieved. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Cuba, for those comments and also for the areas that you support. I'll now give the floor to Uganda. And the last speaker on the list is DRACO. And I think we will try to look at some of the issues that have been raised and see if we can find some consensus. If not, we'll move to the next paragraph. So Uganda and finally, DRAC.
Thank you, Co-Chair. Discussing paragraph zero. We would like to thank the Co-Chair for guiding that this is an opening paragraph. And therefore, loading it with many, many things will actually narrow down the context of the following paragraphs. And that's why we believe that we leave it broad. And we would go with all users. And perhaps remove the commercial bit. We can have it subsequently. We would also have an issue with public databases. Because including this here implies that we will now start to handle issues to do with DSI in public databases only. And this will narrow down the scope of what we are discussing. And in actual sense, even our working group here is discussing benefit sharing from the use of DSI on genetic resources in the broad sense and not DSI that is contained only in public databases. So we would have a problem with having public databases. And also would support the view of Zimbabwe that we should not just encourage at the onset. We do not have anything that stops us from using the word shall. I've heard parties, Japan and Switzerland, have said that the use of shall is permitted if you are having a document that is legally binding. But I think if this is not legally binding, then we are not bound not to use shall. Because it is not legally binding, therefore, we can use shall as and when we find it fit. And on the issue of monetary and non-monetary, we think that this clarifies our discussion that is subsequent to this paragraph. And we would support that and have support for the inclusion of fair and equitable manner at the end as proposed by Zimbabwe. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Uganda. And maybe, I think it's clear on the areas of divergence under this paragraph. One is the verb, which we don't see that we should hold this discussion. So I think that one is a divergent area. The other area that is of divergence is whether we should include public or private databases, public databases in the paragraph. We seem to agree on the proposal by Zimbabwe. And also, there is some divergence with regards to the use of commercial in the paragraph. So maybe noting the comments, I think this was a proposal by India, if I could recall, in the name of commercials. So I would like to hear from India if you really very strongly. We really want to have as less brackets as possible as we produce the subsequent documents. And we really are counting on your flexibility because this is just a preamble paragraph. We have so many other paragraphs where we can express all of these issues. So please, India, if you could comment and be flexible, that would be very helpful.
There is no rigidity on the term commercial. The issue is, how do we define users? What is the trigger for users? If somebody is going to download information from the public database, does it mean that he is using that data? Or when he is actually bringing it to the market, do we call it users? So at some point of time, we need to define user, the term users. So with that caveat, I am totally flexible. Thank you.
Thank you very much, India, for your flexibility on that. I think the other outstanding issue is on the inclusion of public databases in the opening statement. And maybe if I could hear from UK on that, if there is a possibility to move forward considering maybe the issues that have been raised by others. Microphone to UK.
Thank you, Madam Co-Chair. I do think it's important to make the distinction between benefits that should be shared through a bilateral basis and also benefits that should be shared through the multilateral mechanism. And that here we are talking. And further through the text as well around public databases. So I would like to retain the reference to public databases within the text. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, UK, for that. I think it's clear what we have in the paragraph now, what the divergent areas. And I think we are ready to move on to the next paragraph. So I'll hand over to my co-chair to take us through the next paragraph. And hopefully, you maintain the same spirit of compromise and flexibility as we try to have a simple, usable and workable document to give to COP. Over to my co-chair.
Co-Chair, and good morning, everyone. It's very, very good to see you all. So with that very helpful discussion about what is sort of an opening paragraph, a framing, an umbrella paragraph, which was a suggestion that came from you, I think, yesterday or the day before. I think that enables us to have a much more focused conversation on the next series of paragraphs. It means that we can unpick those paragraphs very precisely. And I think that that makes our job a lot easier, actually. So bearing in mind the umbrella paragraph that we now have. Paragraph one, of course, now starts talking about the kind of obligation that arises on users with respect to monetary benefit sharing. Paragraph two provides additional information on effectively the trigger. And you had a very good session in the contact group yesterday evening on that. And then paragraph three, of course, is about non-monetary benefit sharing. So it's important, I think, to keep these four paragraphs in mind as a set of four that together articulate sort of an overall set of obligations with respect to users in general, monetary benefit sharing and non-monetary benefit sharing. In terms of paragraph one, I think we'll keep working in the same way. I mean, to explain the insertion at the end of the paragraph, which refers to where their turnover is more than X US dollars per year. That X is not a typo. That is a placeholder. We heard, I think, lots of requests, both in the COW and also during successive contact groups. We had discussion about minimizing impacts on small businesses. We also had lots of discussions about the kind of obligations that could or could not be placed on businesses based on their size or based on their location or based on a suite of other factors. So this is an attempt, I think, to reflect back to you in the simplest possible way, one possible solution to that request to make sure that there's a sort of a differentiated set of obligations on users. So I'll open the floor to discussion on paragraph one. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Co-Chair. I'm speaking on behalf of the GURLAC. And we would like to add to the paragraph from developed countries after companies. So it will read companies from developed countries using DSI that generates and it will continue as it is until the end. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Columbia. That's very clear. So I welcome reflections from the room on that proposal. And I will bring in Egypt and then Uganda. Egypt, you have the floor.
Well, in fact, we have a problem with the wording companies because in the different legal system, it's not just companies that are generating profit, but we have like all kinds of commercial institutions and we have different naming. So perhaps we can go for a more direct language to say user of DSI that generate monetary benefit. So that it is quite clear. If you are a user and generate monetary benefit, then you should share that benefit. And it is quite clear and straightforward. We don't need to mention it's either profit or revenue or whatever. If you generate monetary benefit, then you should contribute to the global fund. So the wording would be should because you benefited. We have a problem with the new insertion because we don't want companies to split and have small companies dealing with part of the process so that they don't reach the threshold. So we fear, we don't want to go that road. But we can be flexible to say that maybe the percentage is depend on the scale of the company. We can be flexible to have a language that say depending on the scale, the percentage can change. But not to say something is with no payment and just would be our proposal. Thank you, Mr. Co-Chair.
So a suggestion there to replace companies at the beginning with users of DSI that generate monetary benefits. I think that's very clear. Egypt, you made a point about the verb. I mean, I'm in your hands. It was a helpful intervention from Egypt drawing attention to the verb. I'm in your hands. We probably don't need to have the same conversation about the verb in every paragraph. So perhaps we'll immediately draw a big circle around that and we'll list all the options that we have for verbs and we can save a little bit of time. So I hope you can trust us to do that. But thank you very much, Egypt. Let me bring in Uganda to reflect on some of those ideas and the European Union. Uganda.
Co-Chair, I first want to begin by begging for your indulgence and requesting that, from my recollection from the contact group, I think paragraph one was also an option. Apparently, it is no longer an option. So I'd like to request that it becomes an option as well and is taken back to option A and is considered as an option along with the other options that are on the table. Having said that, we think that the use of the terms, of course, we support the proposal from Egypt that companies is a problematic entity to use for determining benefits here. So we think that the use of the terms profits, revenue, turnover can be misleading as these terms have different meaning in a business context. So therefore, we need to specify a suitable metric which can be used to calculate the contribution. For instance, profits typically refer to net income. For instance, profits typically refer to net income after expenses, while revenue refers to gross income. And this can lead to different contributions. So we need to be very clear on what we actually would like to say here. And the last inclusion of the paragraph seems to point to preference to of the three, profits, revenue and turnover, to turnover. And we think these three are not suitable. My proposal is that we look at a way of contributing, rather, a direct contribution that is not determined by profits, revenue and turnover. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, Uganda. So we're building up a good set of ideas here. So there's a proposal from Colombia to insert companies from developed countries. We have a sort of a suggestion from Egypt, which I think is being built on by Uganda there. Users of DSI that generate monetary benefits might be a better term than companies. And also an overarching suggestion from Uganda that we turn this into an option rather than a standalone paragraph. So let's hear more about those ideas. So European Union, Jordan and the Democratic Republic of Congo, EU.
Few comments. One, paragraph one never was an option. It's always been a chapeau paragraph to the options. So I would request that it's kept that way because I don't think it is an option. Two, we support the Egyptian proposal. I think the wording, users that generate monetary benefit, is very clear and avoids the difficulty with the terminology. We will not avoid that difficulty because it comes in paragraph two back with a vengeance, but there we really have to confront it. Three, the proposal by GRULAC is not in line with the convention and the negotiated protocol because when it comes to ABS, we do not talk about developed or developing countries. We talk about providers and users. So all users actually need to contribute wherever they come from. This is a very strongly held conviction and position of the European Union and its member states. And it's the very basis for the discussion that we have here. Thank you.
Floor to EU, please.
One comment. The addition at the end of paragraph one is a reference to the discussion we had about the necessity to reflect on a possible threshold for triggering the need to contribute. We recognize that this is a valid discussion. We are not convinced that the turnover of over a specific amount is the right threshold. So we would not be able at this point in time to agree to that insertion. But it should not be misunderstood that we are not ready to consider formulae for thresholds or the minimum provisions in the text at further stage. Thank you.
Much, European Union. Jordan, then the Democratic Republic of Congo and Canada.
Thank you, President. Maybe, at the beginning, we said that China was trying to use the word "companies", and also to negotiate with the poor people when we talked about users or users. And here, we talked about users, traders or non-drivers. It was discussed briefly, but to unify the middle and unify the parts, that's the decision. We tried to replace companies with users. The other point was the same poverty in the first row and after the word "that has achieved profits", "wants to buy", in three choices. And then, in the other one, in the second one, where it increases the size of the purchase, and we only limited the size of the purchase. And we tried to keep within the choices, whether it increases the size of the purchase or its wants or its purchase. So that it agrees with the first one, that we keep within the choices. Because at the end of the day, we didn't agree on profits or wants, and it entered into our minds the word "purchase". Thank you, President.
Thank you, Jordan. That's very clear. Let's hear from the Democratic Republic of Congo, Canada and Cote d'Ivoire.
Thank you, Mr. President, for giving the speech. The Republic of the Congo supports the position lifted by Egypt and Uganda, which was also supported by Jordan. The use of the word "users" instead of "companies", because if we use the word "companies", it's like we exclude other categories of users who could also share the advantages. That's why we support that users can be used instead of companies. Thank you.
Thank you, Democratic Republic of Congo. So on that opening word, companies, I think so far Egypt has made a very helpful suggestion to replace it with users of DSI that generate monetary benefits. And I've heard universal support for that so far. So I suggest now only take the floor on that aspect of the paragraph if you disagree with the Egyptian proposal. So if you disagree with that proposal, do tell us. But for now, I think, you know, we're identifying that there's quite a lot of consensus around that. Obviously, we have a couple of other issues in play, so let's keep going. Canada, Cote d'Ivoire, and then Chile. Canada, please.
We agree that paragraph one is a chapeau. We agree with the EU on that point. On the specific question you just had, we can live with users rather than companies. We would also expect to see the word "should" rather than "will" in this paragraph. And given the non-legally binding nature of the decision, we think that's more appropriate here. On thresholds, we consider that this level of a threshold could be determined. We're not sure if it would be on the basis of perhaps profits rather than turnover, but we would need a strong evidence basis for that. So we're not close to that at this point. We definitely do not consider, especially with that associated turnover aspect, but in particular because of the, the EU expressed very well, the provider-user nature of ABS in the convention. We do not think there should be a distinguishing between developed and developing countries. If it's a big company, then we expect those contributions. If it's smaller and doesn't meet that threshold, we don't. It doesn't matter where it is. Thank you.
Canada, Chile and South Africa. Cote d'Ivoire.
President. I would like to note that for me, for my country, point one should also be an option, as was recommended by Uganda. And then, say that elements like revenues, a sales figure, shouldn't be included in the paragraph. We should include the users who use the information of the financial numbers and who take benefits, contributing to the global fund if the sales figure is higher. And then, that's it. So I agree with this proposal that I'm presenting. Thank you.
Thank you, Cote d'Ivoire. Let's hear from Chile and South Africa and then Argentina. Chile, you have the floor.
Mr. President. In our view, this paragraph has important merits and a value in the sense that it allows us to distinguish certain criteria about which contributors will be the main sources of resources for the mechanism. As regards the proposal proposed by Egypt, we shared that it is convenient to refer to monetary benefits because the way of calculation and determination of what will be the total contribution will be something that we are developing the options and not in this paragraph that is more introductory. On the other hand, we assign a significant value to the inclusion of this phrase concerning a minimum volume of sales to identify the companies that should contribute. This language can be refined and we are open to continue that conversation. But we assign a very relevant value to have this element to be able to distinguish between the companies that will contribute and the ones that, by their size and scale, should be excluded. Thank you.
Thank you, Chile. That's very clear. So, South Africa, Argentina. I'll take stock a little bit. South Africa.
I'm also of the same view as Chile as to why we have two patterns as chapeaus. I don't know, is this A and B? It's confusing me. And yes, the second pattern or pattern one does start to look like an option. I would agree then with Uganda. But my further point is, on the end of pattern one, I can agree with the EU that this is perhaps not appropriate at this point to have that there. If this is a chapeau, I don't know. But for me also, when we're looking at the percentage, I don't agree with the reasoning that we are trying to look at a threshold. I think all users, whether small or big companies, should be sharing benefits because in our options, we are looking at percentage. And that percentage will be relative to the revenue generated. And so it will always be in line with, you know, how much revenue has been generated. And so I don't see, it's not a fixed value and it won't be a disservice to smaller companies. It will always be relative to what they generate in terms of revenue. Thank you.
You, South Africa. Let's hear from Argentina and then I'll review.
Mr. President. Argentina supports the intervention of Colombia in the name of the GRULAC. Both the intervention that the GRULAC did in the opening and our national intervention and the of many other countries. We explicitly refer to the differences of developed countries and developed countries. For this reason, at this moment, I will not reiterate the same arguments that were presented. On the other hand, we believe it is necessary that this text is included in paragraph one to be considered in the COP. Also, in the discussions these days, it was proposed to include factors of correction. We acknowledge the last section of the paragraph as a proposal in that sense and it is a language in which we want to continue working. Thank you.
Very, very helpful. So let me take stock. I think that we've heard complete agreement that rather than the word "companies", we will start with users of DSI that generate monetary benefits. So thank you to Egypt for that. We have a question mark about the verb, which we won't discuss right now. We have, I think, a split in the room, which we haven't discussed in great deal, but which I detect quite quickly, which is about whether those users of DSI that generate monetary benefits should be confined to users only in the developed world or whether, you know, it would include all users. And I've heard a variety of views on that. I suggest we reflect those in the text. We reflect very clearly the proposal that it should be limited only to those users in the developed world. And then we move on because we have a lot to do. There's been a question mark, I think, around this insertion at the end, where their turnover is. I think I've heard a recognition that we need. I like Argentina's phrase of a correction factor. I think that's quite helpful. There's some additional qualifier, which some of us feel might be necessary, something to do with small businesses or something to do with some kind of exemptions. Not everyone agrees that is necessary. We heard from South Africa that it shouldn't be. But there's a conversation to be had around that last part of the sentence, which I think is very helpful. There is, I think, that covers most of what we heard with the exception of this question about whether it's an option or a chapeau. So my understanding, if it helps, is that paragraph zero was a suggestion from you all, which is a statement about all benefit sharing. So it covers non-monetary and monetary benefit sharing, a useful introduction. Paragraph one is a statement about monetary benefit sharing. Who should share benefits? And then paragraph two is effectively a list of options for how those benefits, those monetary benefits, could be calculated. So basically, statement one is sort of a who should share monetary benefits. And then statement two is a sort of a what should they share? So they're a pair in that sense. And then paragraph three is about non-monetary benefit sharing. So I think that's where we are now. We've got a few more parties. But I think already on that basis, we've got a good basis to move on. But let's hear from Cuba and Switzerland and Brazil. Cuba.
Thank you, President. I was almost reviewing what I was going to intervenes. At the moment, I asked for the speech now. There have been several additions, no? But first, of course, supporting the proposal of Colombia. I would say that for us, it is also a conviction that there should be differences of different processes because they should evaluate possible solutions in that sense. And I recall the decision 15/9, which does not indicate anything in that sense. And therefore, this is the moment to decide. We don't have anything written about this and this is the moment. About the proposal that is at the end of the paragraph, about concentrating on those companies that have a certain volume, entities, a very interesting variant. But when one sees it in a practical way and in various interventions along the way of the contacts has been insisting on the issue of that companies do not share information in a way, let's say, open, simple. This responds to a certain experience of national processes. Therefore, making a decision of this nature in a judicial declaration has its risks. What solution could there be? Well, of course, the companies develop, as I said previously, in national markets specifically. And the parts of the agreements are the ones that would require that type of information. Therefore, I think that for assuming that phrase, it would also have to assume at the same time that the parts where those companies develop will assume the responsibility of providing the information in a multilateral mechanism. I'm not so convinced of the proposal by Egypt because it creates a confusion institutional in my mind, no? Because in the way it is presented, it is understood that there are entities that are not commercial and that they are getting benefits from DSI. So I don't know how I will find out, or what is the list of those entities that are not companies and that generate benefits for us to occupy them. que no son compañía y que generan beneficios en una es para poder ocuparme. ¿Y qué nos está pasando si cada vez que nos llegamos a hablar de users y los etiquetamos de alguna forma? Vamos a tener que crear un glossario, porque en el primer párrafo estaba all user, commercial user. Ahora estamos hablando de user que no son companies y que en cierta manera es diferente al primero. Entonces, yo tengo mi duda, de punto de vista práctico, si esta precisión de Egipto es extendida al todo el mundo y que por lo tanto es importante tener la consideración porque se trata de los proveedores de recursos al fondo global. Gracias.
Thank you very much, Cuba. We'll hear from Switzerland and then Brazil. Switzerland, you have the floor.
Thank you, co-chair. So first of all, we agree greatly, greatly, we agree in general with your summary regarding that this paragraph should be a chapeau paragraph. And then we also agree that we have seen that there is some, or there are different views on the proposal from Grulak with the distinction that benefits should only be contributed by users from developed countries, as we've heard from the European Union and Canada. We also do not support this insertion, and we agree that this should be reflected very clearly in the text. And therefore, we propose to make this clear by inserting users of DSI in all countries and so on, because this will then ensure that we are following the provider-user logic of access and benefit sharing, and also to create conditions that will avoid jurisdiction shopping. And so this should be reflected very clearly in the text. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Switzerland. That's a very clear set of options there that we can reflect for you all. Brazil, so I'll close the list. We're going to move on, but I'd like to hear from Brazil, Kenya, Uganda, Egypt, and Uruguay. Brazil, you have the floor.
Concerning the proposal by Grulak, which Brazil endorses, and the comment made by the European Union, that developing countries versus developed countries are not pertinent to the discussion, or that this terminology has been subsided by provider and user, we would like to react to that, saying that the convention is still in place, the text is still in force, and the convention mentions these developing countries no less than 22 times. The Nagoya Protocol mentions that no less than 16 times. Even the conventions, the decision 15/9 also mentioned developing countries in paragraph 13. This, the embellances and the disparities have been mentioned over and over and over ad nauseam by several parties in here. So this all should be taken into account. I think one comment, we took note of the Egyptian proposal and other proposals that went to the line that saying that companies would not be the best term, and we agreed to that. I'd just like to draw attention that, based on the discussions that have been having for a long time, and also in our national experience, is not a very good approach to folk to try to discern, to determine exactly a commercial user for a non-commercial user. You create all kinds of loopholes. You spend a lot of time listing specific details that a company or user should have or not have to be qualified or not qualified as commercial users, and then lawyers make their day finding loopholes in their definitions. So the question is not the definition user of itself, but we should, our recommendation is that we focus on use and the use itself, the commercial use. If the use is commercial, then that's what's important. So in that regard, we would like to provide an alternative to the text that maybe we hope you can address. And first, we do acknowledge the concern, and we agree with the concern raised by the European Union from the last part of this paragraph, that we fully acknowledge that they need to have further discussion on the threshold and what this threshold could look like, but at this juncture, I think would be too premature to try to determine that. So we agree with the European Union in that regard. So our suggestion was just to leave some placeholder at the end, under understanding that we will have further discussion on what this threshold should be. Now, our suggestion would be trying to be streamlined as possible. I would just read it at dictation speed, but before, I'd just like to mention that for this paragraph to be separate from the previous paragraph and have its own reason, being, I think it's important that we highlight, and again, for the reasons that I have stated several times, that users that generate profits or revenues or turnovers, that means money, should share monetary benefits through payments. And that should be clear, because if you keep mixing up monetary and non-monetary benefits, and again, I have said this and I'm repeating, it doesn't help. We should have a clear understanding. We have not only Brazil, but the European Union, and many other countries have raised concerns about how would the non-monetary benefit arrangements actually function through the multilateral mechanisms. We said very clear that we do not see how this could work directly, so, and we had lengthy discussions on that, so we please beg you not to bring more confusion to this. So for that reason, that's the rationale, our proposal would read as follows. Users that generate profits/revenues/turnover from the use of DSI should share monetary benefits through payments to the global fund, and then we will have the placeholder for the threshold. I'll read it again. Users that generate profits/revenues/turnover from the use of DSI should share monetary benefits through payments to the global fund, and then the placeholder for the threshold. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Brazil. That's a very helpful suggestion. So I'm, I'll keep working through the list. I invite reflections on that suggestion. I hope Brazil won't mind. Don't reflect on the verb, because we don't need to reflect on any verbs right now. We can deal with that uncertainty centrally. And what I understand from Brazil's suggestion is that we need to be very clear that the expectation is to share, it's monetary benefits that are being shared through the global fund. I think that's very helpful clarification, and also a very clear linkage to commercial use in the first part of the sentence. Kenya, Uganda, and Egypt. Kenya.
Thank you very much, chairman. Following the discussions and from your submission, we appreciate, we all agree to use the term user. And as you suggest, this para two is focusing on monetary, and in this regard, Kenya supports the proposal by Uganda and others, this fit in very well as option, and two, if you are considering it as monetary. Then, another thing on addition to that, we are not very clear on the timeframe of the contribution. Is it annually, the lifespan of the contribution? It's not coming in actually very clearly. Is it one-stop contribution forever, or annually, or what? That need to have clarification. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kenya. Very helpful. On the timeframe, I think we have a choice whether to put that in paragraph one or paragraph two, but of course, your suggestion is to move all of this to paragraph two, so I understand that's very clear. Let's hear from Uganda, Egypt, and Uruguay.
Chair, and thank you for the clarification on the objective of paragraph zero and one. And I want to thank Brazil for their intervention of the new language for para two, para one, but would like to say that for it to remain as a chapeau paragraph, we may need to remove the last insertion. And if we want to have the insertion, put it under options so that it is considered as an option, on whether we would like to consider turnover as one of the options for users to qualify to share benefits or not. So I think the intervention by Brazil is supported from here. Thank you.
Extremely helpful. Egypt, and then Uruguay. Egypt.
I believe that the last part of the phrase should not be here. It's too prescriptive, and it can go to the option. And this is a chapeau text, so it should be quite straightforward. Based on all that has been proposed, may I propose a way through to say user of DSI that generate monetary benefit from its use will contribute payment to the global fund? Just straightforward. User of DSI that generate monetary benefit from its use will contribute payment to the global fund. And that's it. Thank you.
Let me hear from Uruguay, and then India, and then we'll move on. Uruguay, you have the floor.
Uruguay apoya la posición vertida por Grulak respecto a la contribución de compañías, de países desarrollados, por los argumentos que ya se han venido conversando a lo largo de esta semana, por las disparidades existentes y que se han venido sucediendo a lo largo de los años, y es por una de las razones que estamos discutiendo esto hoy. Estamos de acuerdo también en utilizar el término usuarios o lugar de compañías siempre y cuando se defina claramente los parámetros de aquellos usuarios, que se definan los usuarios, y los parámetros de aportes, tratando de salvaguardar siempre de la obligación de contribución a aquellas pequeños contribuyentes, pequeñas empresas, investigadores, desarrolladores, startups, que son el motor de desarrollo de nuestros países. Por otro lado, como mencionó Chile y Brasil, es importante tener claro que en este párrafo o más adelante, que estamos hablando siempre de beneficios monetarios. Gracias.
Thank you, Uruguay. Let's hear from India.
Thank you, co-chair. Just to extend our support to the proposal from Colombia, Argentina, and Brazil regarding drawing a distinction between the companies from the developed world and the developing world. And also to add to the proposal of Brazil by adding, when we say that we'll make, we'll contribute to the global fund, I was just wondering because it is an opening paragraph, maybe we can add here, we'll make, we'll contribute, we'll make mandatory and specified contribution to the global fund, the details of which will be clear in the subsequent paragraph. So mandatory and specified contribution qualifies the contribution to the global fund. That is the suggestion. Thank you.
I see the European Union coming in late. Is it very important to you, European Union? Go on, you have the floor.
Thank you, chair. I think that it is quite a change to the setup of the overall annex if paragraph two would actually talk about monetary benefits only, sorry, paragraph one, because then I would ask the question why we have paragraph three? Because then the whole annex is about monetary benefits, and we could actually then start discussing whether to remove paragraph three altogether. It would have been our understanding that paragraph one is a chapeau paragraph, which refers to all users that have to share benefits in whatever form, and that the paragraph two actually then goes into the specificity with regard to monetary benefits and how they're being shared, whereas paragraph three actually deals with non-monetary benefits. In that sense, and I think reflecting on it further, we would actually agree with the, sort of, the fact that either we move paragraph one into as a chapeau of paragraph two, so that it then becomes a complete version on the options relating to monetary benefit sharing, and have paragraph three referring to non-monetary benefits in that regard. I think that in a way, it could solve the issue, because a paragraph one is not a separate option, because it's not operational as such, but it could be a chapeau to paragraph two in that regard, with a general introduction, and then the four options in that regard, sort of, doing that. And I think that that could be, that could be a way to do it. Chair, just to say that we see the discussion around limiting the need to share benefits, and I guess the same argument by the Grulak also applies to non-monetary benefits to developed country users with great concern. I think that it is fair to say that none of the operational provisions of the convention or the protocol that deals with access and benefit sharing makes any distinction in that regard. The fact that in the two texts and the decisions, there's reference to developing countries, those references are made in a very different way. So I think that for us, it is a very, very worrying that we actually go down this road, and I think it's going to be a big stumbling block on the road to a possible agreement on operational modalities, and also the not in line with the whole spirit of the agreement reached in Montreal, and the spirit in the letter of decision 15/9. Thank you.
Thank you, European Union. So we're going to move on. Before we do, I'll summarize what I think I've heard. So we're going to start our paragraph here with users. We then immediately have a divergence, a split, so options effectively, users in all countries or users in developed countries. Then we have agreed that generate, it's another either here, monetary benefits or profit, revenue, and turnover from the use of DSI should, and we have a conversation about the verb, share monetary benefits through the global fund. Then there is a sort of a suggestion that there might be at the end some placeholder language that would somehow introduce a threshold or an exemption or a correction factor, which we can talk about further. So I think that's what we've achieved this morning. That's helpful. We need to reflect on that in the context of paragraph two, and I think in the context of paragraph three. So let's keep going. I'll hand over to my co-chair.
We'll now move to paragraph two. So paragraph two is the paragraph that was discussed a lot in the contact group. There have been a lot of exchanges on paragraph two, which is basically proposing how the monetary benefits should be done. We know that there are still gaps in terms of the percentage, and we still have options on whether it's profits, revenue, or turnover. We started with two options when we had our first opening session, and we have ended up with four options. And I'm not sure if there is an appetite in the room to try to reduce the options because we would need to still have a final option anyway in the end if we are going to move forward with how the contribution is supposed to be done. But if I see that there is no appetite to reduce the options, I think this is one of those paragraphs that will pack and move forward with the discussion because there was quite a lot of discussion around the room through the contact groups, and we even had two contact groups around paragraph two. So just to get a feeling if there is an appetite to reduce these options and at least have something that is wakeable, if not, we understand that maybe this is not something that we can address at this moment, and maybe we'll be able to figure out once we have addressed the other issues. So I see Egypt and then EU. Egypt.
I think we need to replace the word companies with user of DSI in the four options. And in option B, the wording that we use in sectors that benefited from the use of DSI, and we want that to be reflected here. It's not that they rely on, but they have benefited from impact to capture that they have benefited from the past even, not just right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Egypt. I'll give the floor to EU then Chile.
Chair, we concur with you that it would be a very difficult exercise to try to reduce the number of options, but I think that still it would be good if the options actually better reflected the different points of view, which they currently don't. I agree with the proposal by Egypt to change where the word companies appear, that into users of DSI. We have very specific proposal on option B. If you allow me, I will just make those proposals so that option B would read users of DSI that, and now comes an insertion, directly or indirectly benefit from the use of DSI in their commercial activities, will contribute. And then I think we still have a discussion to be had on the percentage, so I would suggest to bracket that. And then to bracket profits, revenue, turnover, and I would like to recall that in the discussion in the contact group, sales was also raised. And then the last sentence of option B for us would read, a list of sectors to which such users may belong is contained in enclosure A. Is it clear? Thank you.
Thank you. That's clear. I'll give the floor now to Chile.
Muchas gracias, señora presidenta. De igual forma, como fue mencionado por el distinguido delegado de la Unión Europea, se ve complejo intentar reducir el número de opciones. Sin embargo, sería conveniente trabajar alrededor del lenguaje y refinarlo para que capture de manera adecuada las distintas opciones y las posiciones de las partes. En relación a la opción B, un elemento que planteamos en los contact group fue la necesidad de hacer una distinción respecto a aquellas empresas o usuarios que están incluidas en un determinado sector pero no se puede considerar que usan de manera intensiva o usan de una manera importante DSI en los productos o servicios que comercializan. En ese sentido, tenemos una propuesta de un texto, pero que nuestra idea es que sea incorporado en el anexo, en el enclosure, y no necesariamente en la opción. En ese sentido, me permito preguntarle a la señora presidenta si podemos hacer inserciones en los anexos que tengan relación con los opciones del párrafo tres, o es una opción que vamos a ver más adelante.
Yeah, I think since B is reflecting also the enclosure, I think it's okay to do it now here. Thanks.
La propuesta va en el sentido de, como decía, determinar efectivamente cuáles son las empresas que usan de manera intensiva o de mayor, con un mayor volumen, DSI en sus productos y servicios. Y recogiendo una idea que fue planteada por la Unión Europea en los contact group, nuestra propuesta es incorporar el siguiente elemento en el enclosure, con el número tres. Lo voy a leer en inglés para facilitar la inserción. Companies in these sectors may be excluded when they demonstrate that marginally rely on the use of DSI. Muchas gracias.
To Chile, we have taken that additional proposal. And with that, I don't see any more requests for the floor. So we have reflected the improvements to the four options. We still have the four options with the improvements that have been made. And so now we'll move to paragraph three. But before that, I see Uganda and Japan. I'll take them as the last speakers because I think the initial issue was whether we have an appetite to reduce the options, and it's not there, obviously. And I think we can accommodate a few improvements to the options, but we'll still have time to discuss them anyway. So Uganda and Japan, and then we'll move to paragraph three. Hopefully, we can make more progress on that paragraph. Uganda and then Japan.
Thank you, Co-Chair. This is just an improvement of option C, to read contribution of one percent of the retail value of all products and services linked, sorry, all products and services that have been developed or created using digital sequence information on genetic resources, slash, and then we put biological resources at the end. It's just an option to say bracket that one. Thank you, Chair.
All right. Thank you, Uganda. And I think that was specific to paragraph C, to option C. Okay. Thank you very much. And lastly, we have Japan. Which option do you want to address? You have the floor.
Chair, we have some comments for option B. The word that rely on is very important. As we discussed during the contact group, some companies rely on heavily on the use of DSI. So this word rely on, we want to keep it. And after X percent, we also discussed this during contact groups. There are various sizes of companies and the various types and stages of development of companies. So we just would like to add after X percent comma as an indicative rate depending on their circumstances. So that is our suggestion. Then, and we would like to keep all options on the table still because we have support for all these options during the contact group. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we'll move on to paragraph three. And I already have Egypt. Just maybe to give. With that, we move to paragraph three, just to indicate that you might recall in the initial non-paper, we had paragraph three stating the need for monetary benefit sharing. And the comments we get, we got on the floor was that we did not have how that is going to be achieved. And so there have been a number of proposals that have been now introduced in paragraph three that indicate how non-monetary benefits are going to be shared. So there are quite a number of options of how that can be achieved. So we hope that this is reflecting what was discussed previously on the floor. However, we open the floor for any comments with regards to paragraph three and how it can be improved. So I have Egypt, EU, then Chile. Egypt.
Thank you, Madam Co-Chair. So I'm proposing the following amendment to, if we go to the line starting from in support of the coming Montreal Global biodiversity framework, so this line, and then you say it can be facilitated through, and then we have the following addition, enhancing the effectiveness of the clearinghouses, of the clearinghouse mechanism under the convention by including a database to facilitate the exchange of information on DSI and its use, thus enhancing collaboration and cooperation among parties and provide information on demand for capacity building, and we continue until by the global fund. Following the point, we add the following text. Specific frameworks for sharing non-monetary benefit should be developed for the sectors listed under enclosure A and based on need identified by parties. Thank you, Madam Co-Chair.
Thank you, Egypt. That additional text has been captured, and I also welcome reflections from others on the proposal that has been made by Egypt. I'll now give the floor to EU, and then we have Chile and then Co-Diván. EU.
Thank you, Co-Chair. And we had a very substantive discussion on non-monetary benefit sharing, and I think that in the context of that discussion, it was really clarified that we're already discussing two different things. One is the non-monetary benefit sharing that users of DSI start sharing in the context of their collaborative activities with others. And on the other hand, based on the discussion on non-monetary benefit sharing, the description of what are the activities that are needed in support of capacity building, knowledge sharing, technology transfer, and so on. I'm afraid that paragraph three still mixes the two and is not clear on what it seeks to achieve. And in line with what we have very clearly said in previous discussions on this one, we have a few amendments to paragraph three, which I will read to you now. In the first line, we would replace the words including, through, by, in the form of. Then in the, in the line that, in the line where we have the sentence, the sharing of non-monetary benefits will, after that, we will add, we suppose to add, continue to be undertaken in the context of existing practices and arrangements. Then go back to the old text, and, and then after the end, we suggest to strike out will and add may also be facilitated, and so on in the text that we have. In the line that starts with it could also be facilitated through, we actually modify the language to an existing clearinghouse under the convention. In the line thereafter, after capacity building, we would actually change the wording saying and, strike out examples, of, and after that, insert allowing, allow showcasing and voluntary reporting on ongoing non-monetary benefit sharing. We have, I think, had a very clear discussion that the global benefit, the global fund can provide some of those activities in, in the context of its, sorry, some of that support in the context of these activities. And we had very interesting reflections by South Africa on how that could be done by the fund. But we continue to be, to continue to say that non-monetary benefit sharing is something that takes place between users and providers, and that the global fund as such has no role in the sharing of non-monetary benefits. Therefore, we would like to delete the last sentence of this paragraph. Co-Chair, I think we've also been very clear in our position on the Egyptian proposals with regard to establishment of a central database. So I guess that this proposal will then appear in the text in brackets since we, it is not agreed. Thank you.
Thank you, EU. And I see that based on the intervention by EU and Egypt, what is becoming clear is that the list of how the non-monetary benefits can be shared, it might need to be expanded based on the proposals that have been made. And also, there's the issue of having a new database that has been proposed by Egypt as part of the non-monetary benefits. And so I would like the parties that are taking the floor to also be able to reflect on those elements that have been raised by Egypt and EU. And I think the other contributions were just about improving the flow of the sentence, which I think does help. Now I'll give the floor to Chile and then Co-Diván, followed by South Africa. Chile.
Primero que nada, quiero pedirles mis sinceras disculpas por volver atrás a un elemento que consideramos importante, el párrafo dos, opción B, que en mi intervención anterior olvidé incluir. Es algo muy breve. En la opción B del párrafo dos, en nuestra opinión, falta un elemento muy relevante, que es la frecuencia respecto a la contribución que deberán hacer estas empresas o usuarios. En ese sentido, proponemos incorporar en este opción B del párrafo dos, un, entre paréntesis, un elemento de frecuencia, es decir, el periodo o el número de veces entre que, en los cuales estas empresas o usuarios deberán contribuir al fondo. Gracias.
Thank you, Chile. And if you also have comments on paragraph three, they are also welcome at this time. I'll now give the floor to Co-Diván and then South Africa.
Madam la presidenta, je voudrais nous inviter à regarder la forme de l'écuture après tous les chapeaux qu'on a eu à mettre. Quand on aborde les questions d'options, quand je regarde la version française, on met le verbe au futur. Et quand il s'agit du point trois, le verbe n'est plus au futur. the verb is not in the future. So I suggest that we return to the same time that was used previously. This is my first time. The second is that inside the test, what is in the middle, where we talk about the needs of communities, I would have liked to add the needs of the parties. But I think that Egypt has made a proposition where it integrated the fact that the needs of the parties should be taken into account. I think we can not add this. This proposition is maintained. The last thing I would like to say is that I agree also with the idea that it should have, precisely, the installation of a database of data to conduct a bit of what we are doing, proposed by Egypt. Thank you, Madam President.
Co-Chair, I'll give the floor now to South Africa, and then United Kingdom. South Africa.
I just want to give some clarity to my proposal on non-monetary benefits. And I'm referring here to paragraph three at the end that talks to the sharing of non-monetary benefits could be further facilitated with Global Fund. The clarity is that monetary benefits should not be set aside for non-monetary benefits. So we can't take a portion of the monetary to do non-monetary. Non-monetary is over and above, and then is an additional portion in that Global Fund. So it's just to give some clarity on that. And then I would agree that the sentence can be removed and replaced with the suggestion by Egypt on specific frameworks for sharing non-monetary benefits shall be developed by the Conference of the Parties for the sectors listed under enclosure A. Thank you.
Thank you, South Africa, also for reflecting on the proposals that have been made by others. I'll now give the floor to United Kingdom, and then Norway.
Thank you, Madam Co-Chair. We can support the EU's additions on this paragraph, and we had some similar suggestions, in fact. We do see that there is an opportunity for the clearinghouse to also provide data for reporting on progress under the Global Biodiversity Framework, and specifically on Goal C and Target 13. And it could provide data for reporting against indicator C2 specifically. As also mentioned by the EU, it could also have a complementary function of providing a platform to share and showcase non-monetary benefit sharing that is taking place outside bilateral agreements to provide the visibility. So just to build on the EU's suggestion and focusing more specifically on the indicator part of that, we do have a suggestion to add. So after the reference to the Global Biodiversity Framework, it could read, "it could also be facilitated through a clearinghouse under the Convention, which could provide information on demand for capacity building, comma, global information on non-monetary benefit sharing for reporting against headline indicator 2C", and then it would continue with the EU's suggestion of "and showcasing voluntary reporting on non-monetary benefit sharing". It would have to be juggled a bit, but I hope you captured that. Thank you. Oh, sorry, and one final point. And then, just to, I think we have already made this point, but just to reiterate that for many of the reasons that have also been provided over the last few days, we would not be in a position to support Egypt's proposal on the inclusion of the database. Thank you, Madam Co-Chair.
Thank you, UK. And maybe just to come back to you, if you could repeat your suggestions at dictation speed?
Of course. So the sentence begins, "it could also be facilitated through a clearinghouse under the Convention, which could provide information on demand for capacity building, comma, global information on non-monetary benefit sharing for reporting against headline indicator C2." Thank you.
Thank you, UK. And I see that with the discussion, we seem to be having consensus that the clearinghouse would be useful with regards to a number of functions for supporting non-monetary benefit sharing. And I think one of them is the proposal by EU about sharing information but also reporting. And then there's a proposal by Egypt that it could also help to host a centralized database, which I think has been bracketed by EU. So I would like to get more views with regards to the proposal specifically. I think we have identified the functions of the clearinghouse, which I think everybody seems to be in agreement with. But what exactly it would do, I think that's where we need to have more discussion around. And also, there is a proposal by Egypt to have specific framework for sharing non-monetary benefits that should be developed based on the sectors that have been listed in two B. So I think in enclosure A, I think this is also something that has been supported by others, but I would still like to get more views on this. So now I have Norway, Uganda, and then Colombia. Norway.
Thank you, Madam Co-Chair. First, to the issue of a separate CBD DSI database, we are in no position to accept that. Regarding the framework, I think we would need to have more information on what that is. But it's our view that capacity building is something that should be done outside the mechanism, because that's the way it works today. Regarding the proposal from the EU to delete the last sentence, we do agree on that, the reasoning being the same, that the mechanism should not be a trigger for non-monetary benefit sharing. I think regarding the comments from South Africa, we find them interesting. And we do think that capacity building could be sort of ring fence in the sense that the proceeds generated by the mechanism could be used for a capacity building. That's maybe a different discussion. But in that case, we think that capacity building should be... It should be done for the purpose of conservation and sustainable use. So that would sort of be to put it on the objective conservation and sustainable use. A new matter regarding the needs of indigenous peoples and local communities, including women and youth. We think there is a comma there that should be removed because we do have evidence from IPAS that IPLCs are the best stewards of biodiversity. IPAs do not talk about women and youth per se, but women and youth is, of course, a subcategory of IPLCs. And in that sense, I think it's relevant to mention women and youth, but not as a separate category. Thank you.
Thank you, Norway. And I see that Egypt will come later on, and maybe they would be able to explain their proposal on the specific framework for benefit sharing. And also, we have taken note of the comments with regards to the reference to indigenous peoples, women, and youth that you have indicated. Now I'll move forward to Uganda, and then Colombia.
Thank you, Co-Chair. We would actually support the proposal by Egypt on establishing frameworks for sharing non-monetary benefits and also enabling the process of data governance through a clearinghouse. Clearinghouse. I think that this is very important for governance of data within the CBD as a whole, but also for the mechanism that we are going to operate. Chair, I would also like to refer back to my submission on option C, just to clarify a little bit, that at the end of the sentence that we proposed, we proposed a slash. I hope it was captured as a slash. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, Uganda, that was, the slash was captured. So I'll now move to Colombia, and then Brazil. Colombia.
President, we would like to reiterate our intention of including in this paragraph one of the mechanisms of non-monetary benefits, and we see it specifically. So we would like to propose the next modification. Users of DSI should share non-monetary benefits, including through capacity building and development, knowledge sharing, here comes the modification, community participatory and intercultural-based research, and then the rest of the paragraph. For us, it is very important that it is reflected specifically, this mention, because it is precisely the basis of our type of investigation. Thank you.
Thank you, Colombia, for specifying the type of research that you want to be reflected here. And we will also hear views from others on your proposal. I'll now give the floor to Brazil, followed by Egypt. Brazil.
We do have a number of comments, but I would like to make a general comment because I think it's very important. This paragraph is way too long, way too detailed, especially compared to the previous paragraphs. I think we should strive to be as crisp and clear as possible. And this is not the logic that we are going to in this paragraph, and that's concerning. It's a very long paragraph full of clauses, and more clauses have been added to it. So it doesn't serve us to be this crisp, at Christmas trees, full of clauses. But the most important comment is, I think a very important point shall be made, again, in a very direct way. From our point of view, it would be very important to separate things clearly. Users that receive monetary benefits from the use of DSI should pay monetary benefit. Full stop. Users that do not receive monetary benefits from the use of DSI then should share non-monetary benefits. And then we know exactly what we are talking about. Otherwise, we will keep messing up the possibility that companies that provide non-monetary benefits as an indication that they have fulfilled their obligation to share benefits. And this wouldn't go with the whole logic of the multilateral mechanism. As we have said several times, and I'm saying this again, we think that the general rule should be payment of monetary benefits. We cannot envisage how, in a multilateral system, a company would provide non-monetary benefits. How a company would provide capacity building, for instance, through the multilateral mechanism, directly. Of course, it can provide indirectly. You can give money to the multilateral mechanism, and then the multilateral mechanism operates a capacity building program. That's what we have said. Indirectly, but not directly. The company itself would say, "Look, I provide a capacity building for X, and that means that I'm in full compliance with my obligation". No. So we are very concerned with these frontiers being blurred. So that's why we propose that this whole paragraph be refurbished completely to be crisp and clear and very direct, not full of clauses. And we separate things. Users that receive monetary benefits pay monetary, make payments to the multilateral mechanisms. All users that do not benefit then can provide other modalities of benefit sharing, non-monetary. And we can talk about that. But it's important that this separation be made. In this, some comments on this paragraph, we do not like the clause "we'll build an ongoing activities", it's not clear to us what this means. We do not want to prejudge how the share of benefits, or non-monetary benefits, will be done. We are building something new in here. We do not want to be stuck to things that we have before. So we are not very fond of that clause. We also acknowledge and agree with Norway on the comment made for women and youth. Of course, we fully support involvement of women and youth, but in this particular case, it doesn't seem to make much sense. And we agree and support what Colombia have said. And in general, I think there should be a very clear message that the provision of non-monetary benefits does not replace the necessary provision of monetary benefits of someone, because this idea is not present in any way in the text. So that's why we would propose that we be completely refurbished and much more shorter and direct and to the point and expressing the ideas that we have just mentioned. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Brazil. And also, we really want to have a wakeable text as well. And so we will try to improve and find a simpler way of reflecting all of the textual proposals that have been made, and also the additional ones that have been made. And I think you've also mentioned one important factor about the separation between the monetary and the non-monetary benefits. And I think we'll continue to see the interlinkages between the paragraphs since paragraph one and two specify the issues of the monetary benefits. And paragraph three is meant to just specify those on the non-monetary benefits. And so we'll try to also find a way of reflecting the distinction between the two in terms of who is expected to provide those benefits. And I hope that as we look at the rest of the paragraphs, we'll also be reflecting on the other paragraphs that have become before it, because there are quite a number of interlinkages between the paragraphs. I'll now move to Egypt. We'll take the last comments on this and then find a way forward because we are receiving quite a number of constructive points on how the non-monetary benefits could be shared. And we want to be able to find a better way of reflecting this, helpful suggestions. So we will not elongate the list any longer because we know that we'll continue to collect more and more options that will not achieve what Brazil has indicated, which is to simplify the paragraph. So please, I would urge you to comment on what has been suggested by others. So please, I would urge you to comment on what has been suggested by others in terms of how the monetary benefits could be shared, but also on the proposals that were made in terms of what should the clearinghouse mechanism achieve in terms of supporting the issues of non-monetary benefits. I'll now give the floor to Egypt, Argentina, and then India. Then I also have women, EU, IPLCS, Zimbabwe and Uruguay. And that's it with regards to this paragraph. So Egypt and then Argentina.
It's just to highlight that the database is an African position. It was just expressed by Egypt. And on another issue, we think that the paragraph is getting too long and maybe it could benefit from being split into two para, into three para. One of them will be having the shampoo section and the general things, but we would like to delete the issue of "we'll build on ongoing activities". We don't want to affect the process. And another paragraph could be like, "non-monetary benefit sharing could be facilitated through enhancing the effectiveness of the clearinghouses" and that para would talk about the clearinghouses. And the third para will be on the need of specific framework for sharing non-monetary benefit. So I think these are the three main ideas that are there and it makes some sense to separate them because if a para is too long, you get distracted. Thank you.
Thank you, Egypt. And I think that's why we really needed to have, provided you with simple and concise paragraphs to avoid the complication. Now I'll give the floor to Argentina, then India. Argentina.
En primer lugar consideramos que la propuesta de Brasil tiene méritos y puede ser considerada en el marco general de la necesidad de identificar claramente a qué nos referimos con respecto a usuarios en cada una de las secciones de las que hemos hablado estos días. Por otro lado, quisiera referirme a las provisiones para el clearinghouse. Nosotros nos referimos a la importancia que consideramos tiene la identificación por las partes de sus necesidades en materia de distribución de beneficios no monetarios, es decir, como beneficiarios de esta distribución. En este sentido, la Argentina considera que el texto debería aclararse a que se trata de una identificación de las partes a través del clearinghouse mechanism en la sección donde refere a la demanda. Podría leer "could provide information on demand from parties for capacity building". Y a continuación consideramos que esta identificación no debe limitarse a capacity building, sino debe replicar como mínimo todas las opciones mencionadas en la oración inicial del párrafo, que consideramos que es indicativa y no taxativa. Muchas gracias.
Very much, Argentina. We have taken note of those elements. I'll now give the floor to India and then EU, followed by Zimbabwe. India.
I would like to echo the concern expressed by my previous speakers. Actually, this paragraph, while bringing focus on non-monetary benefits, has actually sort of gone into the details of the non-monetary benefits, how it will be shared and all of the mechanisms. I think this is going to evolve over a period of time. So I have thought of an alternate formulation just to share that. We can probably say that users of DSI should share non-monetary benefits over and above their specified and mandatory monetary contributions as may be applicable and as may be agreed to between the respective parties as per an agreed framework, which is in support of the Kunming-Montreal Global Biodiversity Framework. I think this captures the intent of the para. It captures that, the fact that capacity building between parties would actually depend on their requirements and needs. It also captures the essence of a framework which has to be put in place to match the capacity building needs between the parties and that capacity building need or other non-monetary benefit has to be in support of the Kunming-Montreal Global Biodiversity Framework. I think the remaining portions of this paragraph are actually subjective depending on the party's concern. Thank you, Co-Chair.
India, if I could come back to you. I wasn't clear if you were making textual proposals and if you were, would you please provide them at dictation speed?
So what I'm saying is that in para three, we start by saying users of DSI should share non-monetary benefits. Then after that, we add "over and above their specified and mandatory monetary contributions as may be applicable", comma, "and as may be agreed to between the respective parties as per an agreed framework, which is in support of the Kunming-Montreal Global Biodiversity Framework", full stop. Remaining portions may be deleted from this paragraph.
Think that parties would react to the initial proposals, but I see that there are additional proposals being made to the text. So I'll collect more inputs and then we'll determine the way forward because as it is, the paragraph is now back here. I think maybe it's almost a page now. So we'll find a way forward in terms of moving forward on this. I'll now give the floor to EU and then Zimbabwe. EU.
Thank you, Co-Chair. And I think it's fair to say, and I agree with Brazil, that this has become an extremely confusing and convoluted text. And this is the case because it tries to address, I don't know how many things, in one paragraph. I do agree with the fact that we need a simple statement in paragraph three that distinguishes paragraph three from paragraph two in the sense that there is clearly in the context of benefit sharing on DSI also the obligation to share monetary benefits. And that is an accessory to use. So it doesn't actually appear in an abstract form. It actually appears when certain entities are using it. And then they will develop in the context of that use specific forms of non-monetary benefit sharing and that will happen with the partners that they have in the context of that usage. So we are sort of clearly ready to have a text that actually says that there is the obligation to share non-monetary benefits. From that, we need to separate the idea that there is a need for capacity building and so on and so forth and that could actually be facilitated through the activities of the global fund. That's also undisputed. I think that's clear. I think that we are also amenable to a text that would say that the existing clearinghouses and frameworks of the convention should actually be helpful and facilitate activities in that regard. We are not in favor of establishing databases, clearinghouses, frameworks ad nauseam. I think we have all of them in the convention that we need. We just need to adapt some of them to the use of that one. I think that from that one, we could have sort of two or three very simple messages like that. The one question mark I have with regard to what we have discussed is, it sounded from Brazil as if somebody who is sharing monetary benefits is not even allowed to share non-monetary benefits. I think that's too limiting. I think companies and users may do both and who are we to actually sort of forbid them to do that? I think what is important to clarify is that those who share, who derive no monetary benefit, are under no obligation to share monetary benefits. I mean, it sounds logical, but I mean, it's clear and that they are certainly still under the obligation to share non-monetary benefits. Now, just for the sake of completeness, as long as we have this one and a half page paragraph, I think Norway made a useful sort of precision with regard to the reference to women and youth. I hope I understood that correctly. But I think it's one precision that we should have also made in our initial statement that we actually, in the line that says "including women and youth", to make it clear that we're talking about women and youth from indigenous peoples and local communities in that regard. So I think that that is something that we clearly need to say. Now, I do apologize, but a comment by Chile a long time ago prompts me to go back to paragraph two and the corresponding enclosure to say that we have taken note of the Chilean proposal with regard to the identification of companies. We probably have a different system in mind with regard to the exemptions for the companies or entities that do not use DSI. I don't want to enter into that one, but just to say that we actually would think it's necessary to discuss that further. But we take the Chilean proposal as an entry point for having a further conversation on how to ensure that companies or entities that do not use DSI are not under the obligation to share monetary benefits in that regard. I think that it is for now. Thank you.
...of time. We have six minutes left of interpretation. So I'll take Zimbabwe, Uruguay, women and IPLCS, two minutes each. If you take more than that, then it means you are not allowing the others to have their chance because we have been told strictly six minutes. So Zimbabwe and then Uruguay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will try to be very brief. You had asked earlier on that we should highlight where the gaps are in our interventions and here the glaring gap is that the proposal by South Africa yesterday about part of the fund being dedicated to non-monetary benefit is nowhere to be found. I can't read it anyway, so that's a glaring gap. Also, I just wanted to say, I would like to align with what EU just said right now that we feel that we should not exclude companies or those who make monetary, who contribute monetary benefits from contributing non-monetary. So they should be allowed to contribute both, the monetary and the non-monetary benefits. And then on the issue of frameworks, I understand that we can't standardize non-monetary benefits like we can standardize monetary ones. However, I think there is need for some structure. There needs to be a structure under this mechanism for how we will facilitate those monetary benefits because without that structure, we can't measure them. Without measuring them, we can't really say if the non-monetary benefits are happening the way we want them to be happening. Thank you.
Additionals, I'll give the floor to Uruguay.
Sí, Uruguay reafirma las declaraciones de Brasil que el texto tiene que reflejar claramente que el aporte no monetario de las empresas que generan ingresos a partir del uso de DICEI no sustituye a su obligación de aportes de beneficios monetarios, lo cual no está claramente identificado en ningún párrafo. También apoyar la propuesta de crear párrafos separados. Un primer párrafo sería simple y claro que establezca en qué caso aplican los beneficios no monetarios. Otro que explique el rol del clearinghouse. Y otro, tal vez que detalle las opciones indicativas de beneficios no monetarios. Gracias.
Thank you. We have two minutes for women. Women, you have the floor.
Thank you, Co-Chair. I will be very quick. The Women's Caucus would like to point out that we were supported when we asked for a more comprehensive approach to benefit sharing, considering that decision 15/9 is not restrictive in that sense. We are not clear why benefits should not be shared with all women and all youth, especially regarding benefit sharing of the use of DSI and in the case of paragraph three, regarding capacity building and development, knowledge sharing, technology transfer, and technical and scientific operation. Therefore, we respectfully insist on deleting the word "including" from paragraph three. Thank you, Co-Chair, and thank you for the support from the parties.
Thank you. And then we have a minute for IPLC 1164. Just a minute.
Thank you, Co-Chairs. I speak on behalf of the IAFB. We thank Norway and the EU for their clarifications around the comma after the word "including". We would like to suggest if we wanted to make this intention more clear that the wording should read as indigenous peoples and local communities, including women and youth within these communities, if that's the intention. This is to keep to whom we are referring clear and easy to interpret and it would keep the terminology in line with the Nagoya Protocol.
Thank you. So with that, we have come to the end of our first session of the morning and you can already see that paragraph three has become more complicated than it initially was, but then with a lot of other good concrete suggestions. And we think this is a paragraph that needs to be developed further and so we feel that this would benefit much more in a contact group setting to be able to simplify as has been indicated and also have a clear look at all the elements that have been proposed. So we intend to have a contact group on this paragraph, on non-monetary benefit, and we'll announce the details later on in the afternoon in terms of when, where, and who will be co-chairing these contact groups. But we feel that this will be the best way forward in working on this paragraph, an important topic. So we have taken note of the in-depth discussion. We have done three out of sixteen paragraphs.
Zero.
Oh, okay, so four, if it makes you feel better, out of sixteen. And we hope that in the afternoon we can make much more progress as we have less complicated paragraphs than the ones we had in the morning. So have a great lunch and attend any side events that exist and hopefully continue to find compromise in your own individual space. It will help us a lot. See you at three. Thank you.